It being six o'clock, I call the November two thousand and twenty-two Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to Order. For a roll call, the only board member that is not here is Board Member Bennett. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seated? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, we're going to have one adjustment on the new business. We're going to adopt the two thousand and twenty-three Planning Board Calendar at that time. Thank you. We're at the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any adjustments? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Board Member Powers.
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item five A, the two thousand and twenty-two dash one six six RZ Clayton Dental Rezoning. We're now here from Planning Board Director, Mr. Howell.
Good evening. Obviously, I'm not Bruce, so I gave, Bruce has the evening off, so I'm going to present this on his behalf tonight. This is a request to rezone a parcel up by Riverwood from plan development mixed use to highway business B three. The property is approximately two point one four five acres in size, and it is currently vacant. You can see there it's located adjacent to the Food Lion Shopping Center. The, on the screen is just the current zoning map and the proposed zoning map to remove it from the PDMU zoning to the B three zoning. The future land use map does show this area as underlying low density residential, but with the neighborhood mixed use overlay that would allow for commercial uses. It is, so we do believe that it is consistent with the two thousand and forty-five growth plan and supports goals LU one, goal LU one, policy LU one point one, one point three, and one point six, and strategy LU one point one point one, and one point six point one, and one point three point one. Just for the planning board to consider approval of the rezoning would allow any permitted use within the B three zoning district to be constructed on the site. Should you recommend approval, the town council should consider all potential uses of the site prior to approving this proposal. And staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning request. And then on your screen, you'll find the recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness for the planning board. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Mr. Howell? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Yes, when you come through.
Good evening. Dylan Tarth, Tar Group. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we've, we've went back and forth with Mr. Bennable quite a bit on this, and I think it's a, it's a good, good rezoning application.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this matter? Thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? If not, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend two thousand and twenty-two dash one six six dash RZ Clayton Dental Rezoning to the Town Council. And please remember, in your motion, you have to read the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approved the rezoning, that we find this rezoning action consistent with the future land use map, goal LU one, policy LU one point one, strategy LU one point one point one, policy LU one point three, strategy LU one point three point one, policy LU one point six, strategy LU one point six point one of the Comprehensive Growth Plan two thousand and forty-five. And we find this rezoning action reasonable and in the public interest because it updates a defunct zoning district and brings the parcel into an active zoning district and furthers the objective of the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Growth Plan two thousand and forty-five.
Thank you. Motion by Board Member Liskin. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Board Member Dupree. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item five B, two thousand and twenty-two dash one zero nine CZM, the Towns at Little Creek Conditional Zoning District. We're now here for staff.
Good evening again. So this is a request to rezone properties from the R ten and B three special use district zoning districts to a conditional zoning residential district to allow up to one hundred and sixty-nine townhome units at a density of three point one four units per acre. The property is roughly fifty-three point eight three acres in size and is located off Financial Drive and Town Center Boulevard, as you can see on both sides and wrapping behind the Walmart Shopping Center. On your screen is the overall site plan. So as you can see, most of the development would be on either side of the Walmart Shopping Center with the remainder of the property left as open space due to environmental constraints. This is just a blow up of the east side of the proposed development, and then a blow up of the proposed, of the west side of the proposed development. Again, it's proposed use of townhomes. It would, it would get, gain access from Town Center Boulevard and Financial Drive with water and sewer provided by the Town of Clayton and electric provided by Duke Energy. It is surrounded on several sides by B three zoning, but also has some residential zoning to the rear across Little Creek and has one piece of, I believe it's another conditional zone for the Charter School that is located out there as well off of Financial Drive. They're proposing fifty-eight dwelling units on the west side of the development with one hundred and eleven dwelling units on the east side with a mixture of front and rear loaded townhomes, one hundred and thirty-eight front loaded townhomes and thirty-one rear loaded townhomes. All of the rear loaded townhomes are proposed to be on the east side of the development with the possibility of varying that front loaded rear loaded unit mix by up to ten percent. And on your screen, you'll see the proposed setbacks and dimensional standards for both the front loaded and rear loaded townhomes. The applicant is proposing to do several transportation improvements. For one at Town Center Boulevard and the proposed Public Street A on the west side of the development, constructing eastbound approach with one ingress lane and one egress lane, and then at Financial Drive and Scholar Drive, construct the side access along the northbound approach. The, they completed a TIA which also recommended a traffic signal warrant analysis for the intersection of Financial Drive and US seventy. The applicant has agreed to a condition to can, to conduct that analysis after eighty-four certificates of occupancy or roughly fifty percent are issued for the development. And then if that study and analysis states that a signal is warranted, the applicant has agreed to contribute up to fifteen percent of the cost of the signal based on a prorata share. The project will also comply with Town of Clayton Stormwater Ordinance. Public water is available on Financial Drive and Town Center Boulevard. They will connect a public sewer in the area that will connect to a pump station behind Walmart, and electric service is available from Duke Energy. They are proposing a fifteen foot wide type C landscape buffer with additional street tree plantings on Financial, on Financial Drive, adding one deciduous understory tree for every forty linear feet of right of way in addition to the requirement for the one canopy tree for every forty feet. And interior landscaping will meet UDC requirements. They are also proposing a number of architectural standards. These are also conditioned in. You can see those on your, on your screen as well. Couple highlights, they will be providing stone masonry accents on a minimum of twenty-five percent of all building, on all front building facades. And they have agreed to architectural variability between townhome buildings. The two thousand and forty-five growth plan calls for this area to be high density residential with a community center overlay, which would allow up to ten to twelve units per acre, and does encourage a mix of single family detached homes, townhomes, multifamily units, and with the community center overlay encourages also a mixture of commercial uses in there. So staff does consider this proposed development to be consistent with two thousand and forty-five growth plan. The current zoning permits low density residential and commercial uses, while the proposed conditional zoning district would permit higher density residential uses adjacent to existing commercial and institutional uses. And applicant is proposing to connect to public water and sewer and extend public sewer to serve the development. So we do believe that the property is suitable. The proposed development will also improve the balance of uses in the area. The area currently has a mix of commercial office residential uses, and this development would provide a transition from the commercial uses primarily along Highway seventy back to the residential uses on the south side of Little Creek. As far as passive adequate public facilities and services, the development would be served by West Clayton Elementary, Clayton Middle, and Clayton High. As we've heard before, both West Clayton Elementary and Clayton High are currently on the CAPS schools list for Johnson County for this school year. The development will be accessed by Financial Drive and Town Center Boulevard and is, they are proposing to provide two point zero nine acres of recreation open space area, including dedication of one point seven one acres as a greenway easement along Little Creek. For wastewater treatment, the development will be served by an extension of sewer connecting into an existing pump station behind Walmart, and the development is subject to the town wastewater allocation policy. Public water, as mentioned, is already, is available on Financial Drive and Town Center Boulevard, and the development will follow the town stormwater ordinance, and all town ordinances, procedures, and approvals will be followed. As far as adverse effect on joining property owners, the development will have a fifteen foot landscape buffer with opaque screening and improve, and make improvements to existing road network with connectivity and public utility and extensions. And with the imposed conditions, no detriment is expected to the general public. Staff believes applicant has met the criteria for master plan approval through the narrative and the proposed conditions. Considerations for the board, you shall make a recommendation to the town council, and that recommendation shall include a written statement of reasonableness and consistency. You may recommend conditions be added or removed. However, any change in conditions requires applicant's approval or agreement prior to the council decision. And then the, if approved, the conditional zoning district master plan and narrative will be recorded with Johnson County, and these would, will run with the land and do not expire. Staff recommends approval of two thousand and twenty-two dash one oh nine dash CZM Towns at Little Creek Conditional Zoning District and Master Plan subject to the following sixteen can, recommended conditions of approval. Conditions one, two, and three are the standard conditions that are on all conditional zoning districts. Condition four is related to the limitation on the permitted uses. Condition five is the, covers maximum number of units, a maximum density and dimensional standards. Condition six covers the required transportation improvements. Condition seven is the traffic signal warrant analysis condition. Condition eight is a, is a, is a requirement that if the, is to conduct the signal warrant analysis. Condition nine, it relates to the amenities that will be provided. Condition ten is the easement dedication for the greenway. And condition eleven is the relating to the minimum number of acres of public recreational open space. Condition twelve is, covers public sewer. Condition thirteen is, covers their energy efficient features that they are proposing to include in the units. And condition fourteen is the architectural variability condition. Condition fifteen includes the other architectural standards, and condition sixteen is, again, the standard condition that if there's any conflict, the conditions control. Again, staff recommends approval, and the, we have provided recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness on the screen.
Thank you, Ben. Ben, could you us, go back one on the screen for conversation piece?
Go back.
Just go back one slide?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I see there are some questions. I, I, I'll start it off, Ben. Is Town Center Boulevard and Financial Drive, are they private roads at this point, or are they public roads as of today?
I'm not certain. I believe Financial Drive is public. Town Center Boulevard, and I believe applicant has done some, may have a better answer to this question. I believe Town Center Boulevard may be private at this point, but I'm not certain, or at least part of it may be private.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board to Mr. Howell? Yes, Mr. Powers?
On number fifteen there, the one thing about driveways, we heard at previous meetings about townhomes with one garage and space in the, in the driveway for a car. And the thing that we heard was a complaint about you couldn't walk down the sidewalk because either bigger cars or pickup trucks were parked in the driveway, and it was going across, across the sidewalk. Is any, has any provision been made to make sure that these driveways that are going to be used for parking are long enough to accommodate either longer cars or pickup trucks?
The applicant, I believe is probably prepared to answer that question, but I will say we did have, staff did have discussions with applicant about that. And I believe they are proposing a, even though their minimum setback, I believe maybe, may only be twenty feet, they are proposing to have between, I think they are proposing to have over twenty feet, maybe even an average of around twenty-three feet between the sidewalk and the face of the garage to try and account for larger vehicles.
Any other questions?
Mr. Howell, could I just get a clarification on what is a type C buffer?
The type C buffer is the, that's the, the buffer that's required for all conditional zoning districts. You have three different options for the width. The code does require conditional zoning districts have a minimum fifteen foot of type C buffer. The biggest difference between type C buffer and other buffers is that it requires an opaque screen of either a fence, a berm, a hedge row, or a wall, or a combination thereof.
Thank you. Is that designated or specified specifically, or is it just up to the builder?
In this case, it's, they have not decided which opaque screening option they will use. And for, for this development, there is an opportunity, the ability in the code to allow the developer to request and the planning director to approve waivers of that opaque screening requirement if there's existing vegetation or other things that would limit the potential ability to put up a fence. So, for example, in this property around the Little Creek area, right back behind Walmart, you know, we probably, they probably will not have to put up a fence all along that area since it's already vegetated and they're actually not developing in that area.
One more thing for clarification earlier, and I forget what page it was on. You mentioned that it was consistent with the area. I just wondered how big of area you were referring to.
Are you talking about for the plan, for the consistency with the plan? Generally, we just, we really look in the immediate area, so.
Like one mile, three miles? Is there any kind of designation for that, or?
Generally, it's just in the, in the immediate vicinity of the, of the proposed development.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Howell?
I have one question on, on Mr. Howell. If something, say if we approved this tonight, and there is a standard in one of the towns departments, or there's an approved standard that, an department that hasn't looked at this yet has, that is in direct conflict with something that's being approved here. And one thing I'm thinking about is appendix D and the thirty units before you have to have a second entrance. And how, how does that get rationalized, or what we proposing, or what the town council approves, is that, is that, is that a trump card to any of the other standards that may come later? Because I know as, as an applicant, I've been on that side of the table before, and we want certainty. And I would hope that would not be the case, that there's some pitfalls that you could have dramatic impact to the subdivision approval or the conditional zoning that, you know, could be a game changer.
Yeah, so generally speaking, that is why staff reviews these pretty extensively before they ever get to you. So we have gone through, I believe this one has gone through three or four reviews already. So we have had all staff from all the different departments review it for compliance with not only town codes, but also state regulations such as fire code. If for some reason something like that was missed, I mean, ultimately, the code would still, unless it was, there was a specific condition or waiver in the code, in the specific regulation, that regulation would apply and could potentially cause applicant to have to do a revision to their master plan in the future.
I was, I was just curious about that because, you know, personally, I would hope that when it got to this point, you know, all those things had been covered, but I was just, I know these are all still new to all of us and trying to feel my way around these questions.
Following up on Mr. Powers' question, since, on fifteen, since the parking is a condition, could we have a condition in addition to the one car garage parking for two, two vehicular spaces?
That is certainly something you could discuss with applicant. One thing I did not mention that, it showed on the master plan, but I did not specifically mention it, and I'm sure the applicant probably will. They are also proposing to provide a number of additional spaces. They're proposing to provide a number of on-street parking spaces as well as at least two areas of small off-street parking spaces for guest spaces or, or for, or family that has more than two cars would be able to park in as well. So they, they have, I believe applicant has tried to provide additional parking to cover the situation to avoid having car, vehicles overhang sidewalks. But again, that question is probably better answered by the applicant.
But I meant for the board, since that is a condition for, for staff, it appears we could, if it's approved by, the recommendation is approved by the planning board, we can make it a condition to have two, in addition to the one car garage, two, space for two parking spaces on each, for each unit.
You, you can propose that applicant would have to agree to it for it to be added as a condition.
Because it's like Mr. Powers said, and that's the first thing I red flagged. And I drove around at, of the plethora of townhouse communities in, in our town looking at the various options, and it seems the ones with two adjacent parking pads, as far as the community to eliminate some of the dearth of on-street parking, limited space for fire apparatus to get through on both sides of the road, has been the ones that have had side by side parking pads. So I was just, that's just from my quick review of several of the townhouse communities, because this issue's been coming up for the year, all the years I've been on the board. And, and it appears we approve it, and then let's say the average car, now SUV is about seventeen feet, two hundred and four, two hundred and five inches. And then we get these fifteen and sixteen foot setbacks. So the SUVs and the pickups are already overhanging onto the sidewalk and, but nothing is definitive in here. I mean, of course, we're not looking at the site plan. So all of that concerns me because we've approved them, then we, we go back and look at them, and the citizens come, and then we look at, did we approve that? Did we approve this fifteen foot setback when most of America now is driving SUVs and pickups? So these things that are starting to bother me, and I'm trying to get ahead of the curve.
Yes, sir. And I, and I will say, I mean, as staff, we have begun really pushing back on applicants when they're proposing smaller setbacks with front parking. We have been pushing them to, we've really been pushing, and that, this applicant can probably tell you, we've been pushing to try and get them to do twenty-five feet. That can be difficult, and of course, it's not something that we can outright require for these, but we can certainly, you know, we certainly do push back on them and, and let them know that that is a recommendation that they provide, you know, more depth. But I will say, I did, I just wanted to point out here on But I will say, I just wanted to point out here on this site plan here, they are providing off-street, on-street parking, but they're widening the road for it, I believe, right in here and then along this curve here. But if you, if you look at the blow up in your packet, you'll see that they've actually have widened the road. So there's still twenty feet or so of clear drivable area outside of the on-street parking. Again, to try and address the fire service and emergency access concerns. But again, if, you know, if the, if the planning board wants to really push applicant to provide wider or additional parking on the individual lots, that's certainly, that is certainly something you can do. But again, for it to actually, for us to be able to add it as a condition, we would need the applicant's agreement to do so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Howell?
I have one question. I was just looking up here at county records and it does say that these right-ofways are public right-ofways, but that does not mean that the roads have been taken over by the town of Clayton. So has anybody studied that? Or is that question being asked? Because I'd hate to have these subdivisions, you know, come in and do what they're supposed to do with their road construction. And then I'd assume if they don't hook onto a road that's been taken over by the town, that that could cause issue.
Right. And so I know we have looked at it. That's something usually the engineering department does look at early on and make sure that there's proper capacity and maintenance of those areas. So like I said, I know Financial Drive is definitely a town road. I just wasn't completely certain about Town Center Boulevard because of how it goes through the middle of the Walmart Shopping Center development. But like I said, I do, you know, I think that they, that issue has been addressed. I just can't provide you that direct answer tonight. I apologize.
But I guess the only thing that concerns me is that, you know, obviously the plat map can say public, but if it's not being actually accepted for perpetual maintenance by the town, then what would that mean? Because I know, in my opinion, it does not look like Financial Drive has been under town maintenance all these years. You know, I would assume that it was being maintained by somebody else, especially Financial Drive where you've got, you know, no vegetation on one side of the road. You know, it looks like it needs some help there. I think that's a concern. And, you know, not saying I'm against this project, because I'm not against this project. It's just that this, that concerns me, that have those roads been taken over? Because this is very much a hybrid situation, in my opinion. It's not like you're coming off of an existing NC DOT road or a long-term town of Clayton road.
I will say, in a lot of the, in a circumstance where the road is substandard, whether it's been taken over the town, by the town or not, if a section of road is substandard fronting on the development, we generally do require the development to improve that road up to our current standards. And then we do go through the process of ensuring that we get it taken over. They're proposing all their roads, with the exception of their alley, that they're constructing for this development. They are proposing to be public town-maintained streets. So again, there is a process that will be, that they'll go through in order to ensure the town has taken over maintenance. And I would expect that that would occur at least on Financial Drive up to that last intersection before you exit their development.
I would hope that the engineer in the presentation could speak to that if you have any information on the status of the roads. Thank you.
And that was the gist of my initial query. Because to me, I knew there were PVA's, probably vehicle areas, but I was seriously doubting the adoption by the town. Just looking at, just the layout and the scope of the roads. But we can get that answered later. If there are more questions for Mr. Howell? Yeah, we have one more.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I was going to go off the deep end here. Going back for more clarification, I know school is something that we can't. Plan we. You said it would be West Elementary, West Clayton, Clayton High, etc. Got a few hundred kids here, more. What is capped school? Like what is it, can you just clarify that for me?
And I'll be honest with you, I'm not completely certain what Johnston County consider, how they determine whether a school is capped or not. I believe it's based on their enrollment at the school. And when it hits a certain percentage, I mean, I think, I think for the most part, school districts generally go over a hundred percent enrollment before they cap a school. My, I know from previous locations I've worked, when a school is capped, that doesn't necessarily mean that a child that is in that school district would not be allowed to go to the school. It would just limit children being able to maybe transfer into that school. But again, I can't be certain, and I'm sure the applicant will mention this as well. Those schools are on this year's capped school list. This development will not be, you know, really come out of the ground for probably two years or more. So, you know, the schools are currently capped. That doesn't necessarily mean they will remain capped.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Howell.
All right, thank you.
We're now here from the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman Moore and members of the planning board. My name is Marty Bizzle with Bassex and Kennedy Engineers in Raleigh, North Carolina, sixty-three ten Chapel Hill Road. I'm here this evening with my development team, representing DRB Homes. With, representing DRB Homes is Cindy Swartzkoff, Gary Morton, Gary, I'm sorry, Gary Wallston, the landscape architect and planner with Bassex and Kennedy. And Caroline Cheeves with Ramey Kemp and Associates, who did our traffic study. As always, Ben did an excellent job presenting and instilled a lot of our thunder. I'll try not to repeat some of the stuff that Ben went over, but I will try to hit on some of the questions that you guys have already asked, which are great questions. Again, our development team there, Ben has already gone over where our site is. I think everybody in town knows it as Clayton Town Center. Or in my house, it's called the Walmart Shopping Center. Our current zoning map, Ben did a good job of letting you know where those are. Those districts shown as R-ten and the business, that's special use district is shown as well. One of the things we always check first is how are we, how are we looking as far as the growth plan, the 2045 growth plan? And as Ben has already mentioned, that we are high-density residential with a community center overlay, which does specify density of twelve units per acre or less for multifamily, including townhomes. So we feel like this is a good, appropriate spot for that. Our site, as already mentioned, is a fifty-three acre parcel. Our proposed zoning is conditional zoning residential. That's what we're requesting this evening. Total units, one sixty-nine. One thing we wanted to specify out a little bit of breakout is all of our garages, all of our units would have front loaded, either front or rear loaded garages, one hundred and thirty-eight front loaded and thirty-one that would be rear loaded garages accessed by a private alleyway. Our total proposed density is only three point one-four dwelling units per acre with a total open space area of forty point two-eight acres. So much of this property would be in its current state or left in its current state, especially along the south side of the shopping center there. Public water and sewer provided by the town of Clayton. Wanted to just speak a little bit on the sewer. A lot of the staff information had mentioned the pump station at Walmart. That pump station is nearing capacity. The town, as you may know, is already looking and has hired a consultant to do a capital improvement project to take that pump station offline and do a gravity extension east. And we are working with staff, staff's been great to keep us informed with that, providing with documentation as the consultant brings that forward. And one of our conditions, you'll see in there, that we would pay a pro-rata share for the cost of that gravity extension and pump station abandonment. So it is not our intent that we would be able to connect to that pump station. We know that it's got to be abandoned and a gravity extension done. So just wanted to point that out. Parking is, because it's obviously, living here in Clayton, I understand the parking associated with some of our townhome developments. One thing here, each one of these units, as we mentioned before, would have a one-car garage, each one of those. We are providing sixty-seven additional spaces, whether they be on-street parking or guest parking lots. So we are providing those and they are split east and west, thirty-six and thirty-one. So we feel like we're kind of dispersing that, but that is available. Our driveway lengths do not, they're not less than twenty-three feet from the right-ofway to the front of the garage. So it's not like you could get a car in there and have an overhang on the sidewalk and you're blocking the sidewalk. Many of these, and I don't have a number for you, exceed twenty-three feet, up to about forty feet. And not all of them, obviously, but we feel like you can at least get a car safely in the driveway. Then you have the parking garage and then you have sixty-seven guest spaces as well. So we tried to make an attempt to mitigate some of these parking problems that we're seeing around town. Obviously, Ben showed a slide, this is a little bit of a color rendering of how this all kind of shapes out. You can see the east side obviously has the most proposed units at one hundred and eleven, next to Johnston Charter Academy. And then on the east side, we have the remaining fifty, fifty-eight with a lot of our open space in the rear. This is a rendering of the east side. You can see how this kind of lies with Johnston Charter and Walmart. We have about thirty, thirty-plus units backing up to the Walmart side of the shopping center. They would be rear loaded with a private, accessed by a private drive. And also would have a type C buffer that I'm going to show you a slide of of how that might look in the field. Obviously, we're required to do stormwater. We've gone ahead and sited that in there. This stormwater control pond is already in place, serving the Johnston Charter Academy. We understand that we will need to analyze that and possibly upsize that to accommodate our stormwater runoff. But that is, that is well within what our plans are for that. Looking again on the west side, the other fifty-eight units, obviously, basically where I refer to, where the old Lone Star is on that side of the shopping center there, would be more or less an extension of Town Center Boulevard. We'd have a stormwater control structure as well, guest parking as well on that side. And one thing I'm going to mention a little bit more, our amenities. We do have our amenities split with a dog park and playground equipment as well. As Ben mentioned before, we do propose public streets, not private streets. We have a street section showing how the parking would be accommodated on one side. So the road is actually a little bit wider. Then we have a public street section that shows no parking, on-street parking. And then we show our private drive. But it's our intent and proposal to basically show and design abilities as public streets to be ultimately maintained by the town of Clayton. So they would be the town of Clayton standards with sidewalks on both sides. One thing we haven't mentioned a lot about, but with a Johnston Charter Academy immediately to our east, it's very important that we show these pedestrian connections. They have installed, I'd say, a lot of safety features out there now with crosswalks and high-visibility crosswalks. We intend to connect to those and try to make sure that those intersections are extremely safe because we are in the proximity. We do anticipate some of our residents possibly walking the school. So that is just one thing we wanted to mention. As mentioned before, fifteen-foot wide type C landscape buffer along our perimeter. The only areas that that might not go in is where we have existing vegetation that more, it exceeds what's already there, which we are kind of adjacent to a floodplain. So some of that vacant vegetation may exceed what a type C buffer would be. This is a little bit of a slide that shows, especially if you're looking at, say that where that car is, is a private drive going along, say, the Walmart side where the rear-loaded townhomes are. This could, you would see what, at maturity, you would see what this kind of buffer might look like. So we feel like the type C provides a nice vegetative screening. We're not proposing fences or walls or anything of that nature. We feel like the fifteen feet at maturity would more than buffer or provide the screening that the residents would want. Just to mention, I touched on it, our dog parks, proposing right now is we have it shown as ninety-seven hundred and twenty square feet of fenced dog park with playstations, waste collection station benches, also neighborhood playgrounds, one on each side, and a public greenway easement that you could see that basically connects the two along the rear of the Walmart Shopping Center. We propose to dedicate a twenty-foot public greenway easement along that section that's shown on our site plan. A little bit about our elevations. Ben touched on our elevation architectural standards that we're proposing. These are representative of what DRB builds and these would meet those standards. We feel like we've gone a little bit above what you might see in a typical townhome development in that twenty-five percent of the building facade, front facade would be masonry. The remainder would be a fiber cement or hardy plank material, not vinyl. So we have called those out in our, in our architectural standards, which would go with the rezoning. This is a typical rear of the, of the front loaded. This is something you would see on Financial Drive as you're coming in, coming down to the school. These are rear-loaded products. They would be fronting the Financial Drive and connected with front sidewalks. This is the rear as you would look from the rear and seeing the rear-loaded garage with the private alleyway there. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Caroline and she is going to walk through the traffic impact analysis that she prepared.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Caroline Cheeves. I am a professional engineer and I specialize in traffic impact analysis. And I work at Ramey Kemp Associates. Our address is fifty-eight oh eight Farringdon Place in Raleigh, North Carolina. So first, I just want to briefly explain to you what a traffic impact analysis is, what that process looks like. And then we'll go over the results with you all. So how the process works is we first have to coordinate with the NC DOT and with the town engineering department to determine what our study area will be. And this map here shows you, every yellow dot is an intersection that we analyzed. And how we analyze the intersections is we collect existing traffic counts. And in this instance, with that charter school so close to the site, it was of utmost importance to make sure that we are capturing that school traffic. So we typically would capture the peak hours that we would study would be between seven to nine AM and four to six PM. However, in this instance, we went ahead and collected data from two to six PM in order to capture typically schools have their peak hour at around three o'clock in the afternoon. And that is typically outside of a residential development peak hour. So that is something that was of utmost importance to both us and to the NC DOT and the town to ensure that we are capturing that school traffic and we're accounting for it in our study. And from there, we will go ahead and grow that traffic up to an estimated build-out year. In this instance, we grew that traffic up to twenty-twenty-eight at a two percent compounded growth rate. And that is growing just like your bank account. So it is compounding every year that two percent growth. And then we will also add in any proposed adjacent development. And then we will also add in any proposed adjacent developments that are coming along the site. I believe there was only one just to the west of the project where we had to include their traffic associated with their development as well. And then we'll go ahead and project the trips generated by the proposed site and apply that to the roadway network. And we will follow the NC DOT and the Town guidelines using software analysis to determine what the level of service in delay is. And the goal of a traffic study is to make sure that we are mitigating the site's traffic. And in this instance, I know you've all driven on US 70 business. I'm not going to sugarcoat anything for you, the traffic is heavy out there. But in this instance, the, what we're trying to look for is what is the direct impact that this site has in the development? And what are some improvements that we can recommend that the development provide in order to improve the overall traffic? So, as I mentioned earlier, we studied those school operation hours. And that's due to the proximity of that Johnston Charter Academy. And the residential development isn't expected to have those overlapping peak hours. But we just wanted to look at that worst-case scenario. And I know Ben mentioned this in his presentation as well. And I just wanted to really highlight this, is that right now, this is a retail and a school development. And a residential development is complementary use in terms of traffic. It creates a mixed-use development here. And one of the benefits of adding that residential to an area that already has school and retail is that the residents that will live here will not need to travel as far for those services. And, you know, as Marty mentioned as well, you know, we're focusing on having pedestrian-friendly access to that school. And that means fewer vehicles that would have to be traveling to that school if the residents here choose to send their kids to that school. And that is just something that has been a big focus just in the industry right now, is reducing those vehicle miles traveled along the public roads. And the biggest way to do that is to promote a mixed-use development. And also, as Ben mentioned in his speech or in his presentation, is that our mitigation for the roadway network is that the intersection of Financial Drive and US 70 Business is currently an unsignalized, what we call a reduced conflict intersection. And so, our proposal is to signalize the portion of Financial Drive that, just the Financial Drive side of the intersection, so turning in and out of Financial Drive along US 70 Business. We are proposing that to be monitored for signalization. And as long as it meets the NC DOT standards for signalization, the development will contribute, I believe it was 15%, to that cost of the signal. And one thing I would like to point out is, as I mentioned before, the goal of the traffic impact analysis is to determine the impact that the site has on the roadway network. And we are only increasing the traffic at Financial Drive, or expected to increase the traffic at the Financial Drive and US 70 Business intersection by 2.5%. And remember that growth rate that I threw out before of 2%? So, we are also part of that overall growth of the area. And even though we're a very small portion of that, you know, of the overall traffic out here, it is important to make sure that, you know, we have a plan in order to improve that Financial Drive and US 70 Business intersection. And so, that's why the project team committed to, you know, contributing to the cost of that signal. And it is an existing issue. It's something that I would normally try and push back on and say, hey, this is an existing issue, it shouldn't be the responsibility of a developer to improve this because it's an existing issue. And, you know, it's not, it's not on the development to improve existing issues. They are just there to mitigate the site traffic. But with that signalization, and I'm fairly confident that it will meet the traffic warrants, but we do have to follow the NC DOT process. The intersection will go from a failing levels of service to acceptable levels of service per the DOT standards. And the main improvement here is that it's going to improve the queuing significantly along Financial Drive. And that is just something that I'm sure you've all driven past there and seen that. I mean, even just dropping down in Google Earth, you can see the queuing there. And so, that's something that, in my professional opinion, is a huge benefit to the public. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about the TIA process or if you have any questions. I guess, Marty?
Yes, yes, okay.
Could you go back to the slide? Could you go back to your slide with the layout with the driveways and the roadway? I think it's one more, back one more?
The?
That one. On the Town Center West driveway and the Town Center Middle driveway infers by calling them a driveway that they're privately owned, I'm assuming you've received X permission to use the driveways to get to Town Center Boulevard? Because you got Town Center Boulevard, you got Financial Drive, which we call it a drive, but then your schematic says Town Center West driveway and Town Center Middle driveway, which infers privately owned to get to your development. So, how's that working out? Have we, and maybe I'm confused, but I'm looking at the two driveways, I see Town Center Boulevard. Other than Financial, which may or may not be an adopted road at this time, but those two infers that they are privately-owned driveways to the public vehicle area of the shopping center, but they're privately-owned driveways.
So, you're asking?
I'm assuming you've received permission to use the driveways for your development to get to Town Center Boulevard?
To get to Town Center Boulevard?
From the driveways off of 70.
So, it's, and Marty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, that is an existing, those are existing accesses off of US 70, the US 70 Business. And as you all stated earlier, is Town Center Boulevard is a public right-of-way, which we are connecting to. And those are existing, you know, NC DOT-maintained intersections. So, they are existing.
Based on what he's asking, the people that are on the west side, there's more housing on the west side than the east side. People on the west side are not going to drive all the way down to Financial Drive to get out?
No, they will not.
They're going to get out in front of the car wash, they're going to get out on the other side of the restaurant. I think he's asking is that, how much is that going to impact what is not a public drive, but just access to the shopping center now? Is that what you're saying?
Right. What I'm, as I stated, the driveways are privately owned. The state doesn't own driveways. So, the driveways are, the public, when you say a public vehicle area, PVA, is a privately-owned piece of property that's given to public access, that landowner or that owner. So, what I'm saying is for your development to get to, if Town Center Boulevard is a city-maintained road, you have to utilize these two private driveways to get to Town Center Boulevard, if you don't utilize Financial. So, I'm assuming that property owner has given permission for your cars to your property, your development, to use their driveways to access the property? I'm asking that question and I'm not an engineer, but I'm just looking at your schematics, knowing that these two are driveways. Because you got Financial, which the city could adopt. And then you got Town Center, which the city could adopt, but you still have two privately-owned driveways.
Chairman Moore, I'll try my best. Going back to our survey boundary that shows the public right-of-ways as they are recorded. Obviously, Town Center is recorded as a public right-of-way, Financial is also. And I'm not sure, but one thing that's maybe a little concerning is the Town Center actually, on the west side, it actually turns out to 70 as a public right-of-way. So, our connection would be on to Town Center with our public street. It would almost be a, on the west side would be a connection of Town Center or an extension of Town Center Boulevard with our public right-of-way. And then, you know, if you're coming out there, you could go east on Town Center Boulevard or you could turn left and stay on a public road, Town Center Boulevard, going up by the old Lone Star, as I call it, out to 70. So, we feel like there, in either direction you are going, you are staying on a public right-of-way. I'm not that sure if that's answering your question or not. But obviously, Financial, as far as it is connected or dedicated down to our property, we will be accessing and extending Financial Drive as a public right-of-way and publicly-maintained road onto our property as well. So, that will also be an extension of Financial Drive. So, we feel like every unit will have access to a public driveway or a public right-of-way.
When we say, and I guess I'm using the term, when we say "public", we're talking about owned, adopted by the town? Or when you're saying that the landowner, the property owner has provided public access?
Yeah, the actual developer here will dedicate that land, they will not own it anymore. It will be dedicated as a public right-of-way. All of our new construction will meet the Town of Clayton standards to and follow their process for acceptance for permanent maintenance. Board member Lipscomb mentioned, you know, you can dedicate a right-of-way, whether or not the road within it has been accepted for maintenance or not is another thing. It is our understanding that it is, but we will double-check that to make sure it's on the town's maintenance plan. But we do know that these rights-of-way have been recorded and I've got those deeds and references here, so.
So, the middle, Town Center Middle driveway, the developer for this property will, not the developer for the Town Center Shopping Center, but the developer for this property would take over ownership? That's what you're saying?
For the roads that, well, we will construct those roads that we have proposed and dedicate a public right-of-way where I recorded maps. And then those roads that we build would be built to Town of Clayton standards. And then town, through the process, the town would accept those for public maintenance or the town would maintain those into perpetuity, so. As any street or for a subdivision that is built.
Alrighty. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant, questions, engineer? Yes, Ms. Bagley?
On that note, Marty, just wondering, so Town Center West driveway, the people that are going to be living in that, those townhomes over there, they won't have to roll through the Town Center parking lots in order to get to their homes, right? There's going to be a dedicated road into their development?
Right. They will drive out of their driveway onto a new Town of Clayton standard road that we build onto a public right-of-way, they'll be on a public street. And if they make, if they so choose, they can stay on a public right-of-way on Town Center Boulevard. It doesn't, having driven out there a million times, it does not look like, but they are dedicated public right-of-ways, rightfully.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Powers?
This may be associated with that, but if they come out of the west section and they turn left going up to Highway 70, how are they going to go left? They can't, can they, or west?
Once they get to 70, it's right in, it's right out only, yeah, right in, right out.
That's accepted, so. Until they add, I'm assuming a stoplight or something at Financial Drive, that the only way you can get out of here and go west is to go up the middle road there?
You can either go up the middle driveway or you can turn right at either the west driveway or at Financial Drive and perform a U-turn. So, you could do the U-turn along 70, yeah, along 70 at the middle driveway. Or you could go down, and that's also why we studied that one off to the east, the Gateway Drive in US 70 to accommodate for U-turns coming out of Financial Drive.
I can hear that. I cannot imagine that's a part of anybody's plan to come out, turn right, make a U-turn and come back left. Now, I've seen that in Clayton and several places that have, when they redid downtown, they have plans for U-turns. I've never seen that anyplace else in my life, but they do evidently in North Carolina.
Yes, it is actually, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, it is actually, I know it's a very controversial topic because nobody likes doing U-turns, but there have been numerous studies and it is actually safer than a full movement signal and it is faster, believe it or not. I know a lot of people don't believe that, but I have seen the studies. I've had many, been in many meetings with NC DOT. They are very proud of it. With, they used to term them "super streets". You know, driving through Holly Springs, you'll see, you'll see a bunch of those or in Wilmington. And it is mainly, they are prioritizing safety, so there are fewer conflict points. And then also the traffic signals don't have to be as, they don't stop the through traffic as long. And so, that's the reason why they are pushing for 70 Business to be like that. I know it's not popular, but that is how it is currently set up, so that's how we studied it. And that's how these residents will have to exit their site. And if they do experience significant delay at that middle driveway, they have the U-turn option, so.
Yeah, I can agree with that because if you've been down 42 East, they have numerous U-turn lanes, so evidently that's an accepted thing to do. So, thank you for answering that.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anyone else? Mr. Dupree?
I want to go back to something you answered a moment ago. Go back, put the streets back up for a second. You're confident that the two driveways, the one that goes by the Longhorn, Lone Star, whatever it was, and the one that comes out in front of the car wash, are those two driveways are public? So, Walmart or whoever owns that property can't decide they don't want you using that driveway. And the reason I ask that is because directly across the street from this is Pinecrest Memorial Park. That's the business I have. That says Pinecrest Memorial Park driveway, and it is. If you build a development beside of that and wanted to tie into my driveway, I'd have a problem with that.
Right.
So, I just, we're trying to head off, I don't know that I'm convinced that this is not going to be a problem for the people who own those two driveways.
Yeah, I can tell you, we have an accurate, up-to-date boundary survey that shows those as public right-of-ways and deed references. And so, I feel confident that we have that. This is one of the first things we do, and I mean, I point well-taken because we don't want to end up like that either, you know. But these parcels, apparently this, I'm not sure how this was planned when it first came in back in the day, but someone gave some thought to these public rights-of-way and how they stub out to these, this parcel, this 53-acre parcel that kind of surrounds it.
So, there's not some chance Walmart or Zack Spees or somebody is going to say, this is our driveway, you can't use it anymore?
And they could say it, but we've got, we've got recorded right-of-ways on record that show that. And we would defend that.
One thing to go along with that, across 70, where the, where the storage units were built. Originally, they had wanted to go down past, I believe it was a Waffle House there. And the guy who owns the Waffle House said, no, you can't do that. And they had to reroute their driveway out of there. And I don't know if that's anything like this area or if it's the same kind of thing.
And you're talking across 70?
Across 70.
And I think what you see there is, and I'm speculating as we haven't pulled the deeds for that, but across 70, you do have a lot of private drives. They're not all public rights-of-way. They're, they're not all public rights away as, as these are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, Mr. Bizel, are you finished with your presentation? Any other, you introduced four people. Anyone else coming to the podium? Are you finished?
I think we're, we're concluded. We're here for questions.
All right, thank you. Any more questions at the applicant? Thank you. That being said, if not, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2022-109 CZM, the towns at Little Creek Conditional Zoning District to the Town Council. And also, if there is a motion, please make sure you include the recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness. Mr. Powers?
Could we have the answer?
You're right. Mr. Powers brought up a good point. I skipped over it. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this rezoning? Conditional zoning? All right, that being said, I go back to my previous statement. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? I for one, I think Mr. Bizel answered my question somewhat. My reservations about parking length, the length of the, the driveways, ensuring that it would accommodate at least one vehicle totally, including of course, the garage and the 69 additional spaces that would be included throughout the community. I'm still a little uneasy, but I see Mr. Bizel and working with the applicant has understood some of our previous reservations and tried to accommodate her in the plat. Is there a motion?
I've got a question for the, the board or comment. I'm really pro greenways and I'd love to see a greenway, but also understand that greenways are extremely expensive to build. And I guess for, for me, I know there's three council people here tonight, you know, I feel like a greenway connecting these two is valuable and I think it could be valuable in the future. And I know that public resources are hard and the cost of doing it with public money is way more than doing it with private money. So to me, personally, I would encourage the council to, in lieu of having open space fees paid to the town, have the developer install the, what I believe is the number one amenity of any neighborhood, which is a greenway. I understand that it would be cost prohibitive to ask the developer to do both pay open space fees and install a greenway. But I do think that's something that the council should consider. And I know that's something that I'll probably bring in up every time we have a situation like this where a greenway is not being provided. And, but I guess, you know, we can't, we don't have the ability like the elected officials do to be able to negotiate out that fee in lieu of recreation. So I just wanted to state that for the council members that are here, that I do feel that that's important and I do feel like this would be a, a much more desirable neighborhood with that connectivity. And I believe that the heaven of property, I know it's on the market, that's right next door to this, that will connect from here over to Dogwood Forest. And it would be a, a great first step at bringing connectivity from this commercial area back into downtown.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Williams?
My only concern is the one left turn to come out of the shopping center. I understand what she was saying about the U-turn, but the U-turn will be down where the ABC stores. And it's kind of hard to get in and out of that area to begin with. And I go to Walmart very often. If you go to the end of Walmart, you take that left, like if you take the right to go to the school. People coming through there flying, turning out. But I just think we need to consider the stoplights and safety of everyone, not just people that's coming into the new development, but the people that are actually in the shopping center as well. Because the only way you turn the left, you got to make the left, go past the Zaxby, and then at that stoplight, you can make a left to go back towards Garner. So that's the only concern I have.
Thank you, sir. Any other, Ms. Bagley?
Yes, board member, I'd like to piggyback onto that. That, my concern, I can see that, that parking lot and the exit to Walmart being the only way to turn left, becoming completely congested on a regular basis. Super concerning in my thought, is there any way to, I guess I would ask the council to consider traffic lights or something that gives people another way to get left, turn left out of that development? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, yes.
Can we address the greenway?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bizel?
We may have to add, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
And this is Cindy Swartzkoff.
Hi, I'm Cindy Swartzkoff with DRB Homes, 3000 RDU Center Boulevard in Mooresville. Mr. Lipscomb, thanks for bringing that up. That was actually something that we had talked about as a design team. You know, it would be a huge amenity for our neighborhood to have that greenway connection. And we would love to use the $338,000 that we would be paying into an open space fee to construct that greenway so that it's something usable, our neighbors, our community owners would enjoy it, neighbors would enjoy it, and it helps provide that big link that is shown for the greenway. So I know there are several council members here tonight. That is something that we would be willing to discuss, partner with the town on it. If that is something that you all can do to waive the open space fee and allow us to use that money towards the greenway, I'm happy to commit to that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend. Also, I believe we can suggest, as Mr. Howard stated, we can suggest conditions. I don't believe there'll be binding at this point, but we can also include that in our recommendation.
Did you have a comment to left turn?
Oh, you can come back up. Sorry.
I would just like to say that in order to get a left turn off a US, an additional left turn off a US 70 business, especially one that is a minor street, as we would call it, a minor street left, that would be very difficult. So it's an NCDOT road. We would have to go before NCDOT and request that ax, that median break, as they would call it. And as I mentioned earlier, they have all these studies showing that, that U-turn, they're super streets or reduced conflict intersections are safer. And, and when I say safer, I'm not just referring to the, I'm not just referring to the residents of this development. What I'm referring to is the thousands of people driving straight along US 70 business that through traffic. So this is just, it is currently set up that western driveway as a right in, right out. That is what NCDOT's expectation is for that site access. And in order to signalize that, what they'll also be looking at is the mobility, as they would refer to it, of that through traffic along US 70 business. I agree with you, as a driver, it is frustrating having to perform U-turns, but what NCDOT is going to be focusing on is that safety and mobility of, and they're going to be prioritizing that through traffic, that commuter traffic along US 70 business, trying to get them from point A to point B as quickly as possible. And adding additional traffic signals will slow that down. And adding additional, even if it's an unsignaled left, that will cause safety issues as you'll have long wait times and vehicles will try and take a gap and they won't see someone. That's how really bad accidents happen. So that's just from NCDOT's perspective. I mean, we'd be happy to ask them for you, but I can just tell you now that I am 99.9% sure they are going to say, no, we would like that to remain a right in, right out intersection. So just wanted to address that.
Mr. Powers?
Can I, I'd like to ask one thing on that. If they stay with the, with the thoughts you're thinking of for the right turn, U-turn and going west, who would be responsible for extending the turn lane for the U-turn? Would DOT step in and say, okay, well, because there's going to be more traffic? If, if you're adding more traffic for that U-turn from, from the two developments, two sides of the development you're putting in now, there's going to be more traffic making U-turns. They're going to need more of a turn lane. Does DOT, DOT say, oh, yes, we'll extend that for you? Or is that up to somebody else?
So that is part of what is analyzed in our study. What we look at is we look at the level of service in the queuing for all of the intersections that we study. And if any of the queue lengths for any specific turn lanes are exceeding the current storage lengths, then that is something that DOT, you know, will identify that and DOT will also ask us to extend that. We did not see any of those. We saw that the existing infrastructure for those turn lengths was sufficient for our additional site traffic. So we did not recommend anything and NCDOT agreed with our findings of the study.
I would like to just state for my fellow board members that I don't think it will be too long before we'll see something coming in on the property next door that will probably facilitate an additional stoplight, which I think would be in a much better location and splitting the difference between Shotwell Road and Town Center for Walmart. And I, I just think there's, I know that property's on the market. I know there's been a lot of interest stated there. I don't know if Ben's actually got anything on his desk about that property yet. I know the ABC store is moving, you know, so there's, I think there's stuff going on. And hopefully those concerns will be mitigated and there will be a much better traffic pattern there in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to thank you for letting us know that. And I'm for this. I was just bringing the concern of the traffic within the, the center itself because there's only one turn. And I was just wanted the councilmen to take in consideration within the parking lot, maybe there's a three-way stop sign there or something, just something to slow people down because you do have that traffic now. You got, what, 166 more residents, you know, coming straight. So that was my only concern, but I'm all for this development.
Mr. Williams, I, I agree with what you said because you got caught, I caught you saying in the parking lot, because it's really not in the parking lot. So I think, I think that that's one of the big things that we got to determine here. And if the, the original developer has not done his part to get these roads taken over by the state, I would hope that applicant would know that now and could, could deal with that because I know this property owner was the original property owner for this. And I, I'm just hoping that these roads have been taken over, but there's nothing out there to indicate that, that I've seen, that the roads have been accepted by the Town of Clayton. But with all that said, I will be glad to make a motion. I am going to add two conditions. One to be that the town confirm that these right of ways that we've been discussing tonight are existing Town of Clayton right, Clayton right of ways or become Town of Clayton adopted for perpetual maintenance right of ways prior to the development being approved or being allowed to construct. And the second is to ask the Town Council to consider waiving the rec fees and having the developer install the Greenway Trail in the right of way they're proposing to dedicate at this point. We find this rezoning action to be consistent with the future land use map and the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan. And we find the rezoning action reasonable and in the public interest because it supports goals LU1, LU2, and LU3 of the 2045 comprehensive growth plan by encouraging growth in appropriate areas, providing a sense of place and enhancing aesthetics along major corridors and in developments, and providing a range of housing types and lot sizes to meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes and ages, with the two conditions that I just specifically stated being added.
We have a motion made by board member Lipscomb. Is there a second?
Not second.
Second by board member Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion passes. Thank you. Item six is new business. You have a copy of the 2023 Planning Board Meeting Calendar. Director Howe, do you have any comments about the calendar for 2023?
No major comments, just wanted to let you know that we apologize for not getting it on the agenda earlier, but just wanted to have you go on and adopt it. It's keeping with the standard that we've been having, which is the fourth Monday of every evening, or fourth Monday of every month for the meeting. So, and I believe you may find there, there may be one or two dates where it shifted a little bit due to holidays.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the 2023 Planning Board Calendar?
I make a motion to adopt the 2023 Planning Board Calendar.
Motion made by board member Bagley. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second by board member, make sure I get it right, Lee. All in favor say aye. Any oppose? Motion passes. Item seven, Planning Director Report.
All right, good evening. I'll be relatively short tonight, but just wanted to run through a few things with you. One, speaking of calendars, please remember for December, your meeting in December is actually moved up a week since we will, the town offices will be closed the day after Christmas. And I don't know about you, but as much as I love y'all, I don't really want to come in here the day after Christmas to meet with y'all. So we will be meeting on that Tuesday evening, the week of Christmas or week before Christmas. And at this point, we do believe we do, we will have one or two items for you. If it turns out that we do not have any items, we will work with the chair to cancel the meeting if so, if needed. Also, just wanted to remind you of a few upcoming dates. There is a, an event for advisory boards on December 6th. You should have received your invitation probably a couple of weeks ago or more now from Heidi, our town clerk. If you didn't, please let me know or please let her know. But again, December 6th, that evening, we'll be having our appreciation event, which is an annual thing. So please, I hope to see you all there. We as staff, there'll be at least a couple of us staff that'll be there as well. December 14th, we have a downtown master plan update public meeting. It'll be here in this room. We expect it to be probably around that six to eight timeframe. It'll be a drop, I think it should be drop-in style public meeting. We will be using that meeting to educate folks on what the downtown master plan update is and, and explain what we've done so far and what we've heard so far through our public engagement. We had very successful public engagement out at the Harvest Festival. So we were out there all day with our consultants and we received quite a few, quite a bit of input. We also have received, I heard today, we've received over a thousand responses to our online survey for the downtown master plan update. So that's really, really good. We're very happy about that. So we'll be meeting with, we'll be here in this room on So we'll be meeting with, we'll be here in this room on December 14th, which is a Wednesday, um, with our, with our consultants for the downtown master plan update. And then the next night on December 15th, will, staff will be out at the, um, Community Center on Amelia Church Road for our Gateway 42 Plan, um, our first public meeting for that plan as well. We also had our consultants from that plan at the Harvest Festival, again, received a ton of input, but this is our first standalone public meeting, um, hoping to, to really talk to some of the stakeholders and those that live out in that Gateway 42 area. Um, but again, the public's welcome to attend, so if you're, feel, please feel free to drop by. Again, that's probably going to be a six to eight drop-in type session. Um, you can learn more about the plan and sort of see where we're going so far. Again, mentioned December 20th is the planning board meeting. And then the final thing I'll mention, um, we do have a new planning board member that will be, um, appointed, I believe. It'll be at next week's town council meeting. Uh, Mr. Bennett did not reapply. Um, my understanding is he is moving, he was moving out of town, and so therefore can no longer serve on the planning board. Um, so we do have a new member that should be appointed by the town council, I believe, next week, um, that'll be joining us probably in December. Um, with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Howell, I hope you do not throw anything at me whenever I ask this question, but it's sincere. Got everybody's attention now. So a previous planning director would give a monthly update on what has come through the planning department as new submittals. Um, I believe that was given not only to planning board members, but to town, other town staff, and also to the elected officials. I really felt like there was good benefit of that, um, because, you know, you do have a little bit more pre-warning about something that might be coming up than just getting it to Thursday before a meeting. So I know that you've been overwhelmed, you've had the staff, and then you've had to restaff, but I'm just making that as a suggestion, if, whenever you get to where that is possible, I think that would be something that I know I would appreciate as a board member, and I think it would be, you know, a good communication tool, so.
Okay. We will, um, certainly can work towards, um, starting to provide that to you. Um, I'll take this opportunity to remind, excuse me, remind folks that we do have a, um, online map that does show, um, developments that are under review or have been submitted to the town. Um, that is located on the, if you go to the town website, go to the planning page, and then on the planning page, go down to projects and developments, there's a link to the, um, new projects map, and there's a developments tab there that you can see, um, all the developments that are currently under review, um, by staff in the town that are approved, um, under construction or completed. Um, and we've updated that map. It is newly updated, we are keeping that up to date about every month or so, or every couple weeks. Um, and, uh, we went back for the completed projects on that map or under construction projects on the map. We did go back to about 2018, I believe.
I did not realize you were updating it that frequently. So, um, that really answers my question, because I don't want you to have to do any busy work by any stretch of the imagination. I just, and, and, and thank you for, for doing that, because I did not realize that it was being maintained to that level, because I know it hadn't been, been maintained to that level.
Yeah, yeah, our old map was not being maintained, so we've actually, with, uh, I think, um, Patrick and our economic development office had been pushing for, um, an updated and newer map, and so, um, Bruce worked quite a bit with our GIS department and, um, got it up and going, and then I know he is, um, regularly communicating with them, and like I said, they're trying to keep it updated at least once a month, if not twice a month. So, but, um, but yeah, we can certainly look at, you know, as we get more in place and, and get more towards a digital, um, some, get some more digital tools put in place, we're working on, um, hopefully it'll become easier and easier to provide you some of that information you're looking for as well, um, whether it's through mapping or through a regular report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ben, I, I was wondering, as the MPO, I know we brought up super street, but when you look at 70, I don't, uh, and I know we think about the Walmart area and the school areas being the, the biggest concern, but just traveling and looking at roadways, to me, the major concern is 70 and Shotwell, the left turns. And I was wondering, and I'm quite sure that's on the MPO's radar, so do you know what the suggestions are?
So, um, there was actually, there was a DOT project to improve the Shotwell-70 intersection. Um, they actually had bid it out, and surprise, surprise, the construction bids came in significantly higher than they had expected and beyond their financial means at the time. However, the town has worked with DOT, and we have submitted a, an application to the MPO, um, to get federal funds to supplement the DOT funds to get that project constructed. Um, we are, we will find out probably in January if we're successful in that. So that has been submitted, um, to the MPO, and we are hopeful that we'll find out in January we're successful, and if so, we would be able to, those, those funds would be available to NCDOT, um, after October of next year to begin to actually go back out to bid and hopefully get that, get those improvements under construction.
What, are you still just talking about left-hand turns or just?
That.
Scissor exchange?
Um, I believe that when they're looking at improvements on, if not all quadrants, at least several of them, I think they're looking at dual, I believe they were looking at dual lifts on, off of Highway 70 onto Shotwell, um, from the, I believe it would be from the westbound direction from Garner. Um, but then I think they were also looking at making improvements on the Shotwell legs as well. Um, and the town actually has, we believe we may have some additional funds that were provided by prior development, um, that we may be able to also contribute to ensure that we get some additional improvements along Shotwell there. So we're, we're working with DOT closely on that to try and get that project back, um, in a funded status where we can actually get it constructed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Thank you, Ben.
All right, thank you.
We're at the point of informal discussion and public comment. Any member of the public would like to speak? Hearing none, what about members of the board? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member, God, my mind went blank, Dupree?
Second.
Second by Board Member Powers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.